Call the meeting into order. Ms. Teague, call the roll, please.
Dave Burris, J.R. Huddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Craig Romi.
President.
Linda Varvow.
Here.
Melanie Wilson.
Thank you. Would you join me in the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, counsel, reminder, if you have a conflict of interest, please let the rest of the council know before you vote. Need a motion to approve an amended agenda. As always, Ms. Teague will keep me straight here. Need a motion to approve the, to amend the current claims to a new total of $208,635.87. And that comes from a change on page six from Southern Hills Septic. In that bill, sales tax was added, so the sales tax has been removed. So the new total for that claim is $3,878, which makes the current claims, the new total, $208,635.87.
Make a motion to approve an amended agenda showing current claims as reading now, 208,635.87.
Second. Discussion? The motion passes?
Can we vote?
Vote.
All right. Don't get technical.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. Need a motion to approve an amended minutes from the January 17th council meeting. Ms. Teague, if you'd help us out with that, please.
Sure. When I sent out the minutes to the council and sent the claims batch to the newspaper for publication, I identified a difference in the current claims approved amount in the batch total. Just like you just did, if you'll remember, we removed a claim of $250 from the batch. And when we reported the new total, a couple of the numbers were transposed. Instead of $28,594, the new total was $28,954. The true total of the claims batch that you approved with the removal of the 250 was 28,954.41 and not 28,594.41. So we'll correct the minutes to show the true claims that were approved and paid.
So can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the January 17th meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the January 17th meeting showing $28,954.41 as a change to the batch.
Current claims total batch.
Okay.
Current claims total.
Current claims total batch.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Need a motion to approve the bills in between, please.
Make a motion to approve bills in between for $167,410.58.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to approve an amended current claims and the accounts payable.
Make a motion to approve the amended current claims of $208,635.87 and 2022 accounts payable claims of $15,851.60.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims.
I make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims at $9,006.53.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session in accordance with South Dakota codified law 1-25-23 legal.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Ms. Teague, Jeff Garland, if you would join us. Hopefully, folks, this won't take long, so we won't keep you sitting there forever. 25, we're back, Ms. Teague?
7:25.
Yep, that's what I'm showing. Okay. Brings us to communications from the public. We have Alex Nelson on the list from Fall River County Communities That Care update. And we ask for a five-minute limit. If you go over a little bit, that's fine, too.
All right. My name's Alex Nelson. I'm the Fall River County Communities That Care Coalition Coordinator. I know it's a big mouthful. Last time I was here, we were really just getting started. I just started on in the position, learning the ropes. We have progressed quite, quite a bit. At the moment, we have our working board assembled. We've broken out into work groups. All of the school districts have participated in our youth community survey. And I recently got the results back, and we are starting to kind of dig through those to see what we, see what we're going to look at and what we're going to focus on and what the real needs are and how we're going to make that better. Through the last couple of months, I've reached out and, you know, we built our board, and it's from all walks of the community. We have professionals, we have, we have professionals from different aspects of the community. We have the, the addiction recovery centers represented, BMS. We have representation from Fall River Health Services. We have representation from basically every, the school district and any person here in town that kind of deals with kids, we have some sort of representation. So we're hoping in the next several months that we're going to have some information and some major announcements and kind of what we're looking forward to presenting to the community as a, an ongoing plan to improve what's kind of, improve Hot Springs, improve Edgemont, and improve Fall River County as a whole. I, if you guys have any questions, I'd be sure, glad to take them. If not, just thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you and kind of give you a general update.
Counsel, any questions? Appreciate the update.
On behalf of myself, I apologize for not being more present than I'd hoped that I would be able to be. I'd like to pick that up, but obviously, I've missed some of the meetings, and I regret that.
It's more than all right. The nice thing with Communities That Care, it's kind of you can step in at any point. And if you know anybody that would be interested in volunteering, you can reach out at me, out to me at the hospital. If you dial in, I have an extension, 2160. And if I don't answer, just leave a message. I'll get back to you as quick as I can.
Can you refresh us on what your basic purpose is?
Yes, we're using a data-driven approach to identifying needs, youth prevention needs within the community.
Okay.
And those needs are going to range from services. It could be specific prevention programs. It could be, you know, just developing some sort of program within Fall River County to kind of benefit the children and the families here. And the long-term goal is to reduce drug use, substance abuse, violent crimes, just delinquent behavior in general.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. You have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you. Michelle Salvatore. Michelle, are you with us tonight? Come on down.
My name's Michelle Salvatore, and I'm at 309 Dakota Street, and I also reside at 302 Thompson Street. And I'm here tonight because I'm seeking justice for a felony, an elderly abuse that happened to my mother almost a year ago. At her home while she was dying on hospice, she was robbed, and our family was robbed of all of our possessions, her jewelry, everything that my mother owned and worked for her her whole life. And she left this earth knowing that all of that was taken. We had healthcare workers, we had people in the home. I've given the police all the names and all. And I feel that there wasn't a proper investigation. I feel that the police did not do their job. I was not, no one came to the house, no one took fingerprints, no one took pictures. This is when Chief Win Scott was still the chief, I guess the sheriff, whatever her position was at that time. Nobody interviewed me. I was with my mother when she passed. I was grieving. I was violated. She was violated. You can only imagine how somebody would feel to have their entire family's heirlooms and possessions taken while she was laying there dying on hospice, unable to move or do anything. They took everything, by the way. This was not some little robbery. This was a major felony. We're talking thousands and thousands of dollars of my family's things. So I want justice for her. It's been a year, and I've been put off and brushed off. I've had meetings, I've had to hunt down people. I've been yelled at by public officials at your offices telling me that I am harassing the police and the newspaper. I've been told that by police enforcement, that I was harassing them. And I, I don't understand that, to be treated in that manner, especially grieving and trying to get justice for her and my family. I have a great big family, and we're going to convene on a lot of things to see how we're going to go forward there. So that's why I'm here tonight, because they closed the case and someone from social services or DSS or some public official there told the police officers that my mother had been giving thousands of dollars and stuff away for years, which is a complete lie and a complete slap in the face. And you can only imagine how that would feel if somebody said that to you, and you were their only daughter, you have a great big family at home, and these things and her possessions have been with us for 100 years or better. So, you know, nobody had the decency to tell me that. Nobody was honest or transparent with me to tell me that. And they did nothing but placate me. And I had to hunt people down to get meetings, to set things up. They told me that they were handing it over to another police officer, a captain, who after a chance meeting at the library, knew absolutely nothing about the case at all and told me that that case was closed because they were told that my mother had been giving things away for years. Me as her trustee and her POA and her caretaker for the past 10 years and pretty much her whole life, my mother was mentally and physically compromised. She had a lot of issues, a lot of heartbreak in her life, and she didn't want to be that way, and she did not deserve that treatment. I don't know what a proper investigation, but I would assume that someone would come to the house, take fingerprints. I requested that, photos, follow-up on the names and the agencies of the people that were involved in the house, because this happened within the last couple of weeks of her life while she was immobile and on morphine, laying there. I have videos, if anybody wants to see how she is. You can see, you know, that she was not, she was incapacitated. And again, I'm her only daughter. That's, that's, you know, I mean, I don't understand. So there was a lot of incompetence and ineptness. And I've been dismissed, me and my family. We tried to call. I've had several family members call, never returned a phone call, never got the phone calls, which is kind of interesting. And not only was my mother violated, but me and my family were as well. It's not only did they rob my mother, they robbed me and my family of our inheritance. They interrupted our grief, our closure, and our comfort. For almost a year now, she passed in February 15th, so it will be a year. I was not even told, you didn't have the courtesy to tell me that you don't even have leads online. So the Budget Committee, I understand, was presented by the new chief, Norton, this past Thursday, and I would encourage all of you to vote for that, however that works, because you need a database for stolen and pawned items in this town. And this is the 21st century. We have technologies that should be used. And it's a year now, so I'm pretty sure that most of that stuff is gone, you know, and it's not going to be found. And the whole time, I thought that you were checking the names. I was emailing and sending and trying to contact you and let you know who was there, gave names, gave timeframes. So nothing, all I was told is they're working on it, and nothing's been done. So I just feel very patronized, and I feel brushed off. And this has caused me and my family immeasurable distress, emotional and mental anguish, interrupted grief, suffering, pain, loss, and heartache. And I would ask you all to feel how you would feel if this was your family. I'm not from here. I have a big Italian family back on the East Coast, and all of us are devastated. So all I'm going to say is that my mother did not deserve this, and my family did not deserve this. She was human, and she left this world knowing that everything she had worked for and my family had for 100 years was taken from her in the last days of her life. So someone knows something here, and all I'm asking for is a proper investigation. Somebody should have come to the house. There was no victim assistance, nobody checked on me, nobody did anything. Nobody came, and I was grieving, I was in shock, still in shock. I violated. And all I want is justice for her. That's all I want. I want justice for her and my family, and I'll take it as far as we need to. So I'm asking you to please do the right thing and use all the resources that you have. Your, you know, everything that you can use to try to find this, because someone knows something in this town. This happens to the healthcare workers, someone in the home, to someone who was there, someone who knew the schedules, and someone who did this while she was laying there like that in between shifts of caretakers that I had just set up. So that's what I'm asking for. I'm asking for justice, and I'm asking for a proper investigation. And I want to hold law enforcement to task and for some accountability. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Somebody may not know me, but I'm Garland Goff, I'm the city attorney. I was just asked to make a comment on this. As far as the council, generally, they stay out of the police department's issues as far as investigations and stuff, so I have advised them as far as being in public not to make any comments concerning any investigations, as comments could jeopardize or damage those investigations. That's pretty much all I had to say.
I am sorry for your loss.
Thank you, Garland.
Yeah, I'm very sorry, too, for your mother.
Is there anyone else, any other communications from the public? All right, we'll go on to council updates. Public Works Engineer, Tracy.
Well, good evening, and it kind of looks like spring is, is coming to North River Street. Both of the contractors are onsite. DRM is back in town this week doing, resuming utilities work. Right now, they are finishing, well, doing another section of the sanitary sewer that is in the vicinity of the former power company building. And there is a manhole there that has to be put in, connection, also a water main that goes up what is actually platted as Washington Avenue that parallels the steps going up behind the museum. So they have probably a week or 10 days of fairly steady work in that general vicinity. They have completed the storm sewer work, the section that they have just done, so that is pretty well taken care of. And then they will start moving further north. As you may have noticed, if you've driven through, that the area that pavement is being removed is being expanded to the north on the east side of the road. And then the suspended sidewalk contractor, Core Construction, they are working now, of course, on the foundation systems that are at the south end of River Street there at North. So that is coming along, and once in a while, we see a little bit of concrete work being done in a couple of other spots around town as well. But for now, probably for the next several weeks, North River Street will definitely be where there's a lot of activity going on. So that's pretty much the road project update at this point. Do you have any questions, anything at this point? No? Okay. All right, well, I think it's going to become a lot more active in about a month, you know, when the, more of the road construction part of it will resume on Chicago Street, so be a lot of activity.
Do we have any temporary signage, like how to park in front of a ACE? Because those people with the big extended pickups and stuff, when they pull in, they still.
Yeah.
You have to almost go in the other lane to get around.
Probably want to talk to the traffic control people that are associated with this project. They may have some temporary signage, because some people are parallel parking, some people are, I guess it's a hybrid between parallel and angle parking. It's, yeah, and with a, you know, 20-foot-long pickup, it can really jut out into the traffic. So, yeah, we'll look into that, see if they can put up a few signs for us.
Yeah, because that's going to get real bad in front of City Hall when they start parking in there, when it starts raining.
Yeah. Yeah, it's construction.
Someone even mentioned, if we wondered if we really even do need a stoplight, because the four-way works really well.
Wait till it's summer, though.
Yeah.
I think probably we'll want our stoplight back during this year.
A lot of people don't use that stop sign, they just kind of go on through.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Tracy?
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you, Tracy.
All right, you're welcome.
Thanks, Tracy.
All right, on to personnel. Can I get a personnel, or a motion to approve Personnel Actions A through J?
I make a motion to approve Personnel Actions A through J.
Second.
Discussion?
I got a question about Jason. E, I should say.
Who?
Jason. He was brought back on at the same, not losing any of his leave or time. So this is his standard anniversary date when he first started.
He didn't lose his leave or nothing?
Nope, he still gets one a year.
How does that work?
Sometimes if you come back within a certain period of time, everything's reinstated.
Yours only got 30 days.
Yeah.
Yep, so this is his regular, he still only gets one anniversary a year if this is it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. On to resolutions. Resolution 8, 2023-7, Bridge Reinspection Program.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-7, Bridge Reinspection Program Resolution. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. So now we're into new business. We have quite a list. New Business Item A, a possible motion discussion to accept the 2022 housing study.
I'll make a motion to accept the 2022 housing study as prepared by Community Partners Research, Inc.
Second. Discussion? Has everyone read all 108 pages?
Yes.
Yes.
I did not, but Ms. Teague told me something I thought was pretty interesting. We're all worried about workforce housing, but according to theirs, the housing for old people is more important in Hot Springs than workforce.
Projected growth, units needed. It is available on our website. It's not in the council packets or the public packets, if you're interested in reviewing it.
Craig, us old folks need a place to live, too.
That's right, Johnny.
Yes, we do. Part of the regular evolving of that, if it works correctly, is if we had more downsized type housing for the elderly available, that would open up their homes that they raised their families in. That would allow more housing to become available for the workforce. So it's kind of a rotating type thing that would go along with that.
Talking about like yours and mine, Deb, or houses?
Yep.
All right. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New Business Item B, a possible motion discussion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a revised MOA.
I make a motion to discuss, to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a revised memorandum of understanding for the VA compensated work therapy, CWT, program, changing the rate of reimbursement from a specific dollar amount to 50 cents above the current federal or state minimum wage.
Second. Discussion? Yeah, Item 6, I just had a concern about that.
It's the same agreement we currently have. The only change is to the dollar amount.
So in the past, the CWT agreement has been a set 1085.
No, it's not Item 6.
He's saying it's Item 6, but.
I'm sorry.
This is in the current agreement we have as well.
Gotcha.
And was drafted by the VA. So if you have concerns about that, before you're comfortable voting on approving this again, we probably need to take it to them. What are your concerns with that item?
Just pointing out that because they are not, they're federal and.
Just pointing out that because they are not, they're federal employees, if they come down into the general public and they damage something, who's liable?
Are you saying this risk of loss of private property?
Yes.
That item that you're mentioning? And I'm not sure what you're asking.
Who's, who's liable?
If they do something wrong, they're liable.
How do you vote, how, how was that being enforced?
Give me an example.
What, what I mean. Because the CWT workers are not federal employees and they're being used by people in the general public, if they damage private property, how does the person get any reparation back from that?
If they're working for the city and they're operating city equipment and it damages properties and it's covered under city insurance.
They are city employees.
Okay.
Is that, okay. Well, wait, no, we bring them home, we hire them on.
Nope, they're contracted workers.
They're contracted workers, so, so that, still, that still goes back to my question.
But they're, they're operating city equipment under our direction and they damaged somebody's mailbox, is that, I mean, I don't think they'll be driving snowplow trucks, but.
I'm confused. At one time, like the golf course manager and the parks department, they were, they were contracted help. We was told we couldn't do that.
Yeah.
So how can we do contracted help through the VA if we can't do it our own self?
This is a compensated work therapy program that we're participating in, it's not a long-term employee. They don't, we, they're, I shouldn't say they don't stay with us because a couple times we have hired them on to be employees, and we're always looking for the opportunity to do that, but this is short-term work. We don't get to say, if they're only available Tuesdays and Thursdays, they only work Tuesdays and Thursdays. We don't tell them, you gotta be here Monday through Friday, H4, so it is more of a contract-type employee. Or a relationship.
I'm just curious, cause we couldn't do contract.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Did you get your question answered, Larry?
Yes, I did.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New Business Item C, uh, possible motion discussion to approve the transfer of the use of the youth baseball program.
I make a motion to approve transfer of the youth baseball program in its entirety to the Hot Springs Youth Baseball Association, recommended, concurred by Parks Recreation Committee.
Second.
Discussion? Jeff, I believe this is you.
Sure, so we have a very enthusiastic group of, of folks right now that are, that are, um, running the, uh, the HSYBA, um, a couple of them are here tonight, so up to your questions, um, but they have offered to take over, uh, the program, um, and what I will point out is, um, our, um, they're, they're gonna run the program in its entirety, however, we will continue to provide basic infrastructure support, so we'll fix the, the irrigation if it goes out, we'll, we'll repair a door, those kinds of major infrastructure support things. Other than that, they have the, the program. So subject to your questions for them, they're here, any of them, Mr. Cruz is, uh, I guess, whoever's, I'm not sure who the senior rep is, but however that works, whoever's the oldest, I guess.
Counsel?
Can you clarify number three in the city will? Allow HS, HYSBA to complete field maintenance upgrades as funds allowed, does that come out of the city budget, does it come out of the parks budget, what does it come out of?
You're talking about city will number three, complete the maintenance upgrades, you're talking about number three on what we will do?
Yes.
Anything, I mean, clearly, right now, we don't have money to spend on anything, so this is part of why they're offering to take this. If we had funds available, we would do major work, but that's, that's the caveat to that number three there. So we would only do what we had, if we got a thousand dollars to do something, we would be able to do that. What I will say this, is that there are, this is only a draft for our information, we had last week, our last council, I had shared with you what was, uh, um, you know, one of the, one of our long, uh, memorandums of agreement, um, we have come to the realization that we don't need to be quite so, uh, comprehensive about it, and we'll have a simple agreement. But this is basically what we're, what we're laying out for council approval.
They will, um, take care of all of the fees and that will be what supports them, they will get the fees for all the signups.
That is correct. They will maintain all the registration fees, they'll collect commercial sponsorship if they put banners on the fence, if they get donations, they handle those through their 501(c).
Okay. So this will simplify and minimize a little bit of the recreation program.
That is correct, and part of, part of my enthusiasm, aside from, I think these guys are great, but aside from my own enthusiasm, is that we no longer, right now, we don't have a recreation director, so whatever spring sports we had going, this is a great help to us because I don't have anybody in place yet, so this helps us get the season moving, uh, while I still deal with that issue.
And it is a real complicated thing you guys do, as far as the organization of, you've got a lot of participants and there's a lot of different levels, so, um, big kudos for what you've done in the past.
And if you would remind us what the age groups are, please?
Uh, start at three-years-old, T-ball, and they go all the way up through, well, we're gonna get a Legion program here going here pretty soon, so three to eighteen-years-old aren't going all the time, so right now, we go up to about fifteen.
But the Legion would be sponsoring the Legion program with?
It is, there, this is, uh, there's some multiple layers, so that's why it's a little more in-depth than this, we, uh, there's a recreational piece, and that's what the city's always historically operated, that's for the little kids that are from three to twelve, that is truly a recreational league, we intend on having it continue that way, cause that's a feeder for our other programs as the hip holder, um, so that bunch, we usually end up having anywhere from four to six T-ball teams, uh, then we usually end up having three teams, uh, which is our minors age group, which is our coach pitch, and those are the kids that are aged seven to nine, and then our ten to twelve-year-old rec program is, uh, where they start to actually do a kid pitch, and we usually have all three teams in that age group. So all said and done, we usually have about a hundred kids total for that, and then that doesn't even get into our next level of kids, where we have, uh, like, uh, we've had thirteen-to-fifteen-year-old teams, we've got fourteen U-teams, uh, those numbers fluctuate, just cause as they get older, kids do different things, but, uh, we.
That would be the teenagers program?
Yeah, it's like a teenagers program, yes, sir. And, uh, right now, we had one team with that and we're, with our numbers, cause we built this thing from scratch, this, baseball is dead in this town, if you don't know, about six years ago, there was, there was no baseball. When my youngest, uh, when I first moved to town, I was taking him up to Rapids, we need to play baseball, cause we had nothing here, literally, uh, so we put a lot of time and effort to build this program up, we, uh, got incorporated in with, uh, Shatter, Nebraska, they're the ones that put on our, our rec league, so that allows our minors and majors and kids a place to play, uh, and, and we've grown it since then. Uh, T-ball's all, just in-town kids, we, the T-ball league doesn't go anywhere, but then as we get older, for fourteen U., that's our teenagers bunch, uh, that's our first group that actually does some, uh, does some travel and competitive type age group of baseball.
From VFW to Bay Bruce to Legion, Legion Prep, we travel, and given time, you may have a couple hundred miles while waiting for these kids that are traveling.
Well. But before we get into any more questions, council is looking at a list of items here. Do those folks have this same list?
They do.
Okay, I just want to make sure when we ask a question, they.
It hasn't been finalized, because before we finalize this, we needed your, your guidance, uh, council's guidance on this, we'll finalize the details, and the last, but last thing will be for Garland, look at this agreement and be sure that we're all okay on it, so. This is, yes.
I, I just wanted to make sure that when we reference question number three under city, whatever, they know what we're asking.
Weekend, yeah. Cause there's some stuff in here too, that we, on our side too, have some concerns with, as far as like liabilities and things as well, so I mean, I think, I consider some working, or is that okay?
It is a working program.
No, absolutely. But it, it kinda gives a framework of what we're trying to get to, uh, we're, we're just trying to make it a win-win for you guys, we understand, uh, a lot goes into, you're, you guys are short-staffed like everybody else, and, uh, we want to do our part too to help you maintain the fields what we can, I know personally, myself, I went out there and, uh, mowed the fields a few times on my own dime, just to make sure it got done and taken care of, so, uh, wherever we can help out, we want to help out, is, that's what, we want to be good, uh, community members as well.
And ultimately, we'll manage the staffing of it, the coaches, the umpires, all the logistics that has to do with baseball, as, that's off your plate, truly, but helping us with infrastructure, bottom line, uh, we need your help with that.
I got a question. Since you guys are gonna, the mowing, spraying of weeds, dragging the fields, all that stuff?
I think, and Craig, let me point out, that was one of the things that we're gonna, we've got it, it's incorrect on this list here, because we're gonna maintain the mowing, we're gonna maintain the spraying, they're gonna handle the fine details of the infield and all that, so this needs to be corrected on here, you're absolutely right, it's on this on the wrong side.
Okay, cause I just can say, we usually don't let people use our equipment.
No, you're absolutely correct, absolutely correct, and so it's, it's on the wrong side.
I just had to clarify that, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
I, I'm for you, a hundred percent.
Fortunately, Jesse called it a working document, he's absolutely correct, but, um, I will point out one thing that, that we've had long conversations about, and that's that the councils, um, has responsibility for ensuring recreational level that are available to everybody, basically, and, and at a minimal cost, and so unlike other things we have in the community that are outpriced, this is one of the things we like to be sure we keep at a, at a, at a reasonable rate for folks, and that ultimately, council, uh, will, will oversee that, that piece of it.
I see where you're gonna, want to use a concession stand, are you gonna start having concessions up there?
We've currently had some concessions during, uh, we have hosted a tournament last year, we had concessions, uh, the high school season, when they used that field, they used that for concessions in the springtime, uh, ultimately, we'd like to get to the point where we get more buy-in from, uh, our baseball association as a whole, uh, but I don't know if you guys know about our youth football program, I'm on that board as well, serve on that one, but we, uh, we use volunteers to service that, uh, so we're, we're hoping to get to the point where we can do that too, to leverage, uh, if, if we control the baseball program, uh, we can kinda make people volunteer a little bit more easily than you guys can, so we can, uh, we can make some stipulations that you have to pay a deposit, and then you get your money back when you work, so the goal is to eventually get volunteer hours to cover concession stands four nights a week when we're running these rec games.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I'm glad to hear this is a working document, I'm waiting for Councilman Lukens to read city will item six and mention that we do have an agreement with, uh, the state for the use of these facilities in the event of an emergency, so we can't guarantee throughout the entire year that you'll retain the use of the concession shed, restrooms and storage area, because we have an alternate agreement already in place.
And we used to have the word sole use, we took that word out exactly for that reason, because they understand that if we had.
Hopefully, nothing big happens, but if it does, they get it first.
Baseball, at that point, baseball, as we said.
The, the good news is they don't have access to the fields.
Right.
But everything else around may be taken up with emergency responders in the event of a major incident.
Might not be able to park up there, but they can't use the field.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, other than that, no, I think the big thing is, is we, we still obviously want to be involved, cause we don't have any heavy equipment or anything like that, so any of that field stuff, we're, we're gonna need help with as far as, uh, like getting, getting, we have batting cages purchased, and I know we've worked with the city, we're gonna try to get those put in, uh, we, our association put, uh, purchased a backstop for that new little field that we started to get put in last year, so, uh, that, that's a huge priority to get done this spring, especially cause, uh, talk to the community, is it sounds like they're trying to get their girls softball going again this summer, and, uh, we're gonna need, uh, field space right now, cause the little kids, the T-ballers share that softball, and there's just, there's just not enough room for them, because we all, we all play nice to each other, it would, it overlap, but we still got sometimes practice going till nine at night, which, uh, on a work night's kinda tough sometimes.
There's the problem with being too successful, right?
Yeah, well, it's good, nothing better than seeing those ball fields full all summer long, and kids out there having fun, that's what, that's why we all, but I'm pretty sure I can say, you say that, so.
Yeah, we all done it.
Any other questions? I have some.
Go, go.
Go ahead. So, um, I think you have something, sir? No, go ahead, Bob.
Um, so, under the Hot Springs Youth Baseball, Baseball Association agrees to item number one, uh, we've talked a little bit about it, the registration fees, uh, must be approved by council, uh, my concern there is that, uh, you're taking over our youth recreation program, uh, and wanting to make sure that the, the fees that are charged, uh, don't exclude some families, uh, that otherwise wouldn't be able to afford it if you were to raise the fees to, to a point where you feel, you know, it's gonna generate the revenue you're looking for, and there still needs to be those traditional youth, you know, summer recreation fees, in, in my mind, what's, what's your thoughts?
Yeah, no, I, I imagine, like, like I said, I'll just lean back on our football program, we offer scholarship reviews too, so I mean, if we take this over and we find out, uh, like anything else, inflation's going nuts, if I gotta pay umpires seventy-five dollars a game when it was fifty, and I, but, so we gotta move our budgets as well for that, but, uh, we will, we won't leave any kid behind, if a kid wants to play baseball, we'll find a way to play baseball, I mean, that, that's the reality of it, we, we've all paid for kids to play other sports besides our own kids, and we're, we're pretty committed to the community, uh, my wife would probably kill me if she knew how much money I've. But, uh.
This is being taped.
Yeah, that's all right.
If you'd like to share that with her right now.
Busted.
But, uh, no, we, we got a great bunch of guys here, we want everybody, kid, to have an opportunity to play, there, there's never, if, if we know about somebody that wants to play, we, we find a way to let them play.
Okay.
And of course, uh, going forward, those fees would be transparent and commensurate to years past, taking a summary of that, and perhaps a good assessment, uh, that would make it fair and equitable for everybody.
Yeah, I, I recognize that it, it may make it difficult for you folks, ideally, we want to break even, we, we want to make a little revenue on it, but if we don't, you know, uh, the kids still are able to, to participate in the summer recreation program, so we don't want to lose that opportunity for the kids that, uh.
Yeah, no, um, that's why, that's why number two, I think, was pretty important on this list, cause it talks about being transparent, giving you guys the fee structure on the rec league only, cause the, we do have the other side of the thing too, we have the travel stuff, and that's the ones where that, that's our operations, that's completely separate, that's our, we need that above and beyond, I mean, if you get into travel ball, you know, you're in that for a reason, so we have to use that to, uh, support operations as far as, uh, making sure that, uh, if, if we have to buy new bats for that program, we need to do whatever, so we, there, there's higher fees associated with that, but that's a whole separate thing outside of this recreational base.
And, and I, I would not advocate that the council sticks their nose in that part of it, just when it comes to the city's summer recreation program, uh, that, you know, we want to make sure the kids can.
I got two bats behind my door if you need them.
All right, uh, so then, under the city will, uh, item number one, um, agree to provide you folks with complete access to the fields, so help me understand complete access, I mean, um, is that the same as exclusive access to them? Are, you know, if there's other activities that need to use them at a particular point, are they gonna be available to them, or do you expect them to be available exclusively for you?
I don't know how to respond to that, I mean.
Are you talking about like in the offseason? Or?
They're only, this is only during, during the spring season.
Well, this is, no, this is summer, this is all summer, this is start in spring, go through summer.
Right, but I can't think of, I mean, is, is there a conflict on, on, in event that I would?
I, I, that's why I'm asking the question, I don't know that there is, but if, if they feel that once the seasons start, those fields are off limits to any other activity that may, you know, want to use a field for a day or an afternoon or whatever it is, I just want to have an understanding, uh, is this exclusive access?
Yeah, I don't know how to answer the question, Bob, except I would say this, that, you know, these guys, um, are, are on top of this, and so I think if we had an issue like that, that we had to go rearrange our schedule a little bit to accommodate something, I believe they would do that, I mean, I.
Yeah, it just, well, once games get set up, literally, there's games pretty much Monday through Thursday guaranteed, every once in a while, Friday or weekend game, but Monday through Thursday nights, I gotta think that field's used like, bored every day, every night.
But maybe, maybe what they're thinking is that on your, when they're not being used, other neighborhood kids could get together and play.
Yes, we encourage that.
We will not place cards at the field. I think, Bob, that's what you're talking about, is if a family wanted to go play softball, you know, or something, whatever.
Family reunion or whatever.
And I didn't have any particular situation in mind, I'm completely behind this, I, I think it's great what you guys are doing, I'm not looking for a reason, you know, to not have it happen, it's just.
No, it's, I know what you're saying, like, I, I don't know if we can do like, write a first refusal or something, so like, we can go in there and be like, yeah, it's baseball night, we can't have a family game night out here, but otherwise, if it's during the daytime and somebody, it happens.
I think it'd be a case-by-case basis. Our practices and games upcoming, so. Our practices and games upcoming, so for any event someone comes to you asking to use the field, you have an idea of what's already been solidified for days.
And we don't reserve them anyway, so I mean, we have to, we have to.
It's worked all this time.
Yeah, we could work with you, we've had issues before, and I think during the weekday, that's not a problem on the fields.
And it would might maybe be nice for you to post something on the shelter up there so that walkers and whoever else could see what you guys are doing and so they would know to come play and cheer, to know what's going on, what, when, where, and how, and then they would also know when it's open and available without having to contact people. So maybe posting a board up there with your schedule would be great.
Is there a bulletin board to provide that information there?
There might be one at the shelter that's covered, but I was just saying, we have a sign ordinance and even temporary signs are supposed to be approved by the council.
Just let us know.
I'll work closely with these guys to, as we maintain everything on an even keel.
So I have two more questions, again, not trying to find a way to make this fail or not work, just to make sure that, you know, we're clear on everything. Item number two, city will agree to provide heavy equipment and city staff operators for projects requiring such when feasible. I like the when feasible, I just want to, you know, give you folks a heads up that anyone that lives in Hot Springs knows that there's a road reconstruction project going on, and we're learning daily that there needs to be an awful lot of support from city staff with the construction folks. So would certainly help out where we can, but there may be one of those situations where you need something this week that we literally can't help you with. So give us plenty of heads up if you're looking for something like that, so we can see if we can work it in the schedule, and if we can't, we can let you know. We'd love to, folks, but the city crew is down there doing this. Last week, they were hauling millings for the temporary road. So as far as their priority, priority 1A is water, sewer emergencies, roads, those kinds of things around town. 1B is supporting the road reconstruction project. Just want to, you know, give you a heads up there.
Yes, sir, thank you.
You gotta stop the sir, please.
I have 30 and a half years in our book.
Mr. Mayor is fine.
Anyway, what I wanted to comment to that is, in the event that's something that does need to be done, could we be authorized to contract that out to an authorized, approved vendor that may be able to clean the field or mow the field or fix the divots or give us some gravel or fix the lights? Any type of infrastructure that you could do but cannot do because of logistical circumstances, could we have the ability with your approval, get it done and send you the bill?
No.
Everything except for the last thing you said.
Not without having that discussion through parks or wherever, so that council has an opportunity to look at it and say yes.
So we can anticipate that.
I would say the road project's gonna come to an end, it doesn't feel like it, but if we make it through this first year, I think by next year.
Yeah, things will get much better.
Basically, the mayor's perception of that, come to Parks and Rec and see if we choose to do that, we'll go that direction first.
You still have to have it in your budget, which you wouldn't have it in this scenario, so you still wouldn't have the authority to grant them the permission to do that.
Unless it was something that was budgeted in parks that we were gonna do. So it just would depend, that's a broad thing, so.
Your kids will be playing Legion ball, hopefully after the street project, maybe before?
It's, well, last, we had, we had a bunch last year, it was our first year, we had like a junior Legion team, so those were the kids that went up to like 16, 17 years old, and we may have Legion, we got weird numbers, because that was that group that's about 17, 18 now, was like our very, very first years of baseball, so there wasn't a whole lot of kids from that age group, we got a big glut of them that are like 14, 15 years old right now. So I can guarantee we'll have one in two years, we may have one this year, depends on who all signs up, so. Then that creates a whole bunch of different other issues if we end up with Legion, because we only got one big ball field and everybody from eight, would be 18 down to 13 plays on that big ball field, so that's gonna, we'll have some logistic problems with that too.
It is a Legion field.
So to raise a caveat to that, instead of us saying the bill, maybe perhaps could we absorb some of those costs and just get it done with your approval? If the field needs to get new dirt, I gotta fix the mound, or I gotta fix those divots, it's gonna cost me $3,000 as an association, and we have the time, we found a contractor, could we get it done? And just earmark that as, hey, here's an after-action review for review after the season's over, this is what we invested, maybe perhaps Parks and Rec earmarked some of that for their next year's budget.
And I think as long as, as long as we work with you hand in hand in advance, our engineers look at and approve what's going on, I think, I mean personally, I think that's fine, you know, but as long as council approves.
Yeah, we want to know as things are happening afterward, the fact.
Is this something that we need to keep discussing? Do we need to table this? What do we need to do? Because we've got a whole list of other items we need to cover also on that.
I think, I think the final end product, I will bring back to council and present to you based on your comments, and I, we need a few things to work on a few things anyway, as long as we have your guidance, that you're comfortable with the general direction of this, we'll wrap this up in the next week or so and get everything done for you, based on your comments.
And I'm not stopping you guys, we've got a long list of stuff also, okay?
So I guess the bottom line, if you give us the authorization to take over the youth rec piece while in limbo for discussion infrastructure piece, so that way we can begin advertising, begin recruiting, we can begin doing other things logistically on the baseball side, we can do that, we can always come back to that other piece later. So if you give us a thumbs up on us taking over that program with that earmark of discussion further, we can begin at least one piece of that action, so we're not behind the wall. Already, we have 30 games scheduled plus for this year, so how do we do that without?
We're behind the curve on this one, we know that, so that's why we're trying to get this through. Admittedly, we have a few things, some things we need to work out, but I think if we get the general direction, they get the green light to take the program itself, we can work out the details through the committees as well.
Okay.
I think it's a big joy, you guys, congratulations and doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
I know a lot of fundraisers, back when I ran the Legion program, a lot of fundraisers got that field built and reworked, and we weren't being laughed at anymore by out-of-town teams coming in to look to at a bad field. We spent a lot of time and money and volunteers, your father-in-law for one, we did a lot of work up there, and I congratulate you for the work you're gonna do, but I know it's a headache, good luck. It's a lot of work, guys.
So, do we need to table this? Because if we vote yes on this, all this stuff's agreed to.
If I could make a recommendation, and Misty, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't want, table's not the right terminology on this, I think that we can modify the, if I'm not.
Your motion is to approve the transfer of the program in its entirety, and I did my notes just say we'll work on an agreement for further discussion and a review.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, that gives them the green light to move on the program, we'll work out the details.
Well, I'm just going by what this piece of paper says.
Yeah, I understand.
And you just got it tonight, so we'll still work on that piece of paper, but if your motion can.
The motion just transfers the program.
It's just transferring a program, that's what we're doing, an MOU can come later.
Yes, sir.
Okay, do you see any concerns with the questions that have been put to you? Okay, council, are you?
Garland, would you agree?
I agree to work with them, I have no problem, I like their program, and just, you know, having time and stuff, the city do it, money, you know, money's always a big object.
Money stuff.
So then the motion in front of you is to transfer the youth baseball program in its entirety to the Hot Springs Youth Baseball Association. All right, any other questions? Do you folks have any more questions for the council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Congratulations. Thank you. Or condolences.
And no VIP seats yet.
Thanks, you guys.
New business, item D, possible motion to discussion to accept a service proposal.
Make a motion to accept the service proposal and approve agreement for services in 2023 with True Green for a total of $15,854.98. Breakdown is parks, $8,544.60. Freedom Trail, also parks, $1,363.50. Evergreen Cemetery, $3,454.20. Mueller Center, $1,050.40. And wastewater treatment plant, $1,442.28.
Second.
Discussion?
Are we going to be including the new area down below Centennial Park, close to the river, for any kind of assistance in growing nice grass?
We already talked about spraying those in public works, using our vinegar and spraying on the wall, we're gonna spray that down.
What about, you know, offering nutrients and grass so it grows, nutrients for the grass to grow, and that's what True Green does, but we also have to be cognizant of chemicals around the river, but we also use that True Green along, you know, south of Brookside, which is close to the river, so, but.
That's a good question. Can we add that? Well, we can't do it right now, but.
And there's budget.
Yeah, we did not budget, and let me clarify this, True Green and what we pay them for is specifically the weed control in those areas, and so it really isn't, you're right what you say, True Green does, nice green lawns and all that, it's not what we pay them for, we pay them for weed control.
And fertilizer.
And fertilizer, but that's not, it's not the same thing as what you're talking about with the landscape or a manicure lawn. So we can put that in next year's budget, we did not budget for the river this year, because technically, we're still working on it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I got a question, I mean, and I can talk about there, it's a good idea.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item E, possible motion to discussion to approve a ratification.
Make a motion to approve a ratification of plat for the plat of lots 1R, 2R, 3R, 4R, 5R, and 6R of Crosswind Subdivision located in the northwest 1/4th and northeast 1/4th of Section 10 TE8SR6E, BH M Fall River County, South Dakota, as shown on the plat filed in book 27, page 272.
Second.
As always, Misty will help keep me on track where I go astray. What's included in your packet is the plat of these particular lots. If you'll notice, this was originally signed back in July of 2021. I'd like to draw your attention to the Hot Springs Municipal Airport Boundary on the bottom of these lots, and then the Hot Springs Municipal Airport Boundary on the right-hand side of the lots. So these are lots that are, if you've seen the structures going up at the airport, though, those lots are not city property. So when this plat was originally put together, and the signatories on it were county folks, that's why there wasn't a spot for the city to sign it at that time. Then, there have been ongoing discussions with FAA and the county, recognizing that because it's these buildings, these lots are adjacent to the airport, that there are building requirements to them, they can't build them high enough that they interfere with the flight path of airplanes. So once the county recognized that, they realized that this plat had to come back for discussion by planning and zoning. Tracy and Rick, our airport manager, have gone on, gone out and taken the measurements of all those structures out there, and they fit within the FAA guidelines, they do not intrude on the flight lines. So everything about this is okay, but because it was missed when it was originally signed, that the city needed to be a part of it, now they're coming back and asking you folks, give me authority to ratify it, that's what this is about. Any questions? Misty smiling.
Yeah, again, for clarification, even though the property is in the county, it's adjacent to city property, so that's why we have a say in it.
Specifically because it's adjacent to our airport.
Right.
And I don't begin to understand the specifics of it, but depending on how far the buildings are away from the runway or the flight line, then they can be, they can get taller and taller as they get further and further away.
I got a question. It's in relative to land at the airport, but our land goes clear to the Cheyenne River, cross the road all the way, is that airport property too or city property?
I don't have a specific answer for you.
It's on our airport plan where the city property is, I just don't know for sure, but you can look at it, I think it's either 418 or 318 acres, does that sound right? And we have it mapped out, you can look at it, it's on our.
I just know the city owns all the way to Cheyenne River.
That's across the highway?
No, it's across the dirt road that goes to Crow.
Oh, okay.
It's across that road, and a nice flat land down by the river, and, yeah.
Would that be behind Hubbs' property down there?
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess I'll go to city hall and see.
Yeah.
We've got it laid out for you.
Okay.
Any other questions on the ratification? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item F, possible motion to discussion to acknowledge the resignation of Melanie Wilson.
Motion to acknowledge the resignation of Melanie Wilson, Ward 4 alderman, and to accept applications from Ward 4 residents for council consideration to appoint someone to fulfill the remaining term.
Second. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the second, my bad, thank you.
Discussion. So council, I had sent out a separate email to each of you with Melanie's resignation effective February 1st. So what I'm asking here is for you to accept applications from Ward 4 residents to fulfill her remaining term. She's in the first year of her term, so if someone wants to step up and you folks select somebody, then that would be to fulfill her term through 2024.
Would it be okay just to state publicly Melanie's reason for resignation?
Absolutely.
She and her husband, needing more space to do their business, have moved out of Ward 4, and so reluctantly, she had to give us her resignation, so they, I think, actually are now outside the city limits, so. Until we annex.
Right.
And then it'll be Ward 2, so. Anyway, she, it did not please her to have to leave the council, she enjoyed working for, on behalf of the city and the residents of Ward 4. Just a comment, we're gonna miss her, she was a, she was a good alderman, and appreciate everything she's done with us and for the city.
So along those lines, Melanie had asked if I would read her resignation. So, "It is with great regret that I have to resign my seat on the city council. Due to needing more space around our residents to conduct our businesses, we have moved one half mile outside of the city limits. I have sincerely enjoyed the honor of representing the city during my time on the council. I have nothing but the most respect for all the members of the council. I have firsthand seen the effort everyone puts into doing what is best for the advancement of the city." of the city. I will greatly miss being part of the process, as it was something I sincerely enjoyed. If I can be assistance in the future, please do not hesitate to ask."
That was nice of her.
Any other questions, comments?
She'll be missed.
Again, the important part of this one is recognizing that if you pass this motion, that it will be appointing someone to fulfill her remaining term, which would be through July 2024.
And what is the process for someone to try to get that appointment?
It would be the same as what Melanie went through to get appointed the first time. Residents of Ward 4 will submit a letter of interest, application to the council for your consideration. You would then take a look at those and pick who you want to represent Ward 4.
Will we put a deadline on that? Will that be till the first meeting in March, probably, to give them a little more time that we'll accept those until?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
And then we can come to that meeting like Melanie did when she... So, we can advertise without some kind of notice?
Yeah.
So, we'll get this put on the city's website. See Brett sitting out in the audience? I figure he gets something in the paper. And hopefully, someone will step up and fill the remainder of Melanie's term.
What's that meeting date?
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item G. Possible motion discussion to authorize the finance officer to reissue.
I make a motion to authorize the finance officer to reissue the maturing U.S. Treasury bond at SD 5 number 21080-104602 Water Fund for a six-month term at 4.65%.
Second. Discussion. Misty, any comment?
Thanks for proving it. I already did it.
But not before you approved it. I should point that out.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Hey, you pushed the button, Misty.
New business item H. Possible motion discussion to approve and authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign.
I make a motion to discuss to approve and authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign the 2022 Audit Engagement Letter with Kettle Thorsterson, LLP.
Second. Discussion. So, these are the folks that do our audit for us every year. Misty's been very pleased with them. I think council will recognize they've done an excellent job for us. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item I. Possible motion discussion to approve and authorize staff to purchase.
I make a motion to approve and authorize staff to purchase as city property Arctic Cold Weather Boots not to exceed total of 1,500 to be funded by future supplemental appropriations.
Second.
Discussion.
These people that buy these know that if they leave, they stay at the city?
So, these, we discussed with several of the committees, these... This is... And it has in large part to do with the more extreme temperatures that we're dealing with right now. So, we're authorizing certain departments to purchase these Arctic boots for extreme temperatures that remain city property, stay with the city, and are issued only on a day-by-day basis. So, they don't go home with the employees. They remain. Now, obviously, there's size issues. We understand that. But we have to get this in. We've had this last storm, not last one, but the previous one. We had some serious, virtually almost some serious problems with that. So, the intent is not... Is for them not to use their year-round steel-toes boots, you know, in that environment. So, that's the purpose of this. We did not budget for it as safety equipment, so we're asking to allow departments to go ahead and do that individually. And then, we don't want to take it out of the clothing allowance that they get now.
Yeah, that steel and good cold boots don't run too fast.
Yeah. And this was identified with the last water breakout at the golf course, that the two employees that were out there, in some cases, were spending more time in the truck trying to make sure their toes didn't freeze than they were actually in the ditch. And this isn't specific to a department. Any employee that is going to be in those situations need to have the Arctic boots available to them. But to answer your specific question, Craig, yes, recognizing that they're not inexpensive and they're not everyday wear, they are something that the department heads will understand or city equipment, just like a dump truck. Employees shouldn't be taking them home with them. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item J. Possible motion discussion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign agreements.
I make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign Agreement Number 2023-7 with Joel Johnson, Doing Business as CES Code Enforcement Specialist, LLC, for Code Enforcement Services for 2023.
Second. Discussion.
I have no problem doing this. My problem with it is, is we're gonna do this, and we need to start enforcing our ordinances and step and follow through.
That's what we're trying to do.
Did we... We talked about this and approved this as part of the 2023 budget, didn't we?
Yes.
So, that's the question.
It was in the budget. It's just a renovable contract, an agreement, if you will, I guess, that we need to... And we're not using him a whole lot right now, so, you know, we're doing this as much as we can locally, but we need to get him there so we can use him if we need to. So, that's the intent of this.
I agree with Larry. I have no problems hiring this guy. Why do it away? But, I mean, like Bill said, we approved it in the budget already. I have a problem with the ordinances not getting... You know, only thing everybody's worried about is properties getting cleaned up. A lot more ordinances in Hot Springs getting broke than properties cleaned up, and we're not doing a darn thing about it.
Can I suggest, folks, that we hold the discussion to the motion? That's a pretty big discussion.
Well, it is part of the motion, cleaning up ordinances and stuff.
Now, this motion deals with contract for this individual, and code enforcement in general is a really wide discussion point.
I agree with you, Bill. I just think we need to do our part also. But that's all I'm saying.
No, I...
To go hand in hand.
I have a question on bullet number four, compensation procedures. Halfway through the paragraph, clarification. We'll start off at the beginning. "City shall place a retainer in the sum of $1,500 with contractor annually." And then, the couple sentences down. "If the work performed is in excess of $1,500 annually, then and in that event, city agrees to pay invoices submitted by contractor." So, council needs to know what those expenses are before they're incurred above the $1,500. So, what am I missing here?
It says, "In the event the contractor does not meet the $1,500 retainer, any excess will be carried over to the next year or be refunded."
Which, right now, we do have a credit for the retainer we paid the last time. And then, you will know, because the invoice will be submitted and it will be included in your claims batch. And I hope that the communication between our administration and our current development coordinator includes with him what we have budgeted, so he does not exceed that amount.
My question is still out there. City shall place a sum of a retainer in the sum of $1,500. If the work performed is in excess of that $1,500, so he could put another $1,000 work in excess of the $1,500, and the city will agree to pay those invoices.
But we still can't exceed our budget, though, Mayor.
And your question is, how will you know?
We're not gonna know, yes.
So, we get invoices from him like we do for everyone we pay?
You're not gonna know in advance, nor do you know any of the department's expenses in advance. Is that what you're... I understand what your point is, Bob, but...
My point is, we're saying we're gonna put $1,500 retainer here, but he's okay to exceed it and let us know after the fact what that amount is. I'm just saying, the council ought to know before he exceeds the amount that this is the amount I expect to exceed it by, and give him an opportunity to say, "Fine, go ahead and do that," or, "No, we're not approving it."
And I was gonna bring this up along with the mayor. Thanks for bringing it up, Mayor. But these are those hidden costs. I mean, if you hire a contractor to do a job, and they don't tell you what the hidden cost is, and they end the job, they slam you with the hidden cost.
This is our third renewal of this contract. We haven't had any of these problems.
Misty can correct me if I'm wrong, as I know she will. But the point is, right now, you're approving $1,500, essentially. We already have a credit, so you're approving less. In fact, if he were to go over that, just like any other department, we... I gotta come back to you and ask for more money from that department. So, if he were to go over the $1,500, is that a fair...
I think the budget is $4,000, though.
I think our budget's $9,500.
I didn't remember it being that high, but yeah. It's a bigger amount than this.
So, you're right. We can go up to the budget, like with any other expense, which I don't...
So, we're giving him permission to go up to the $9,500 if he wants to?
I think that's the right amount.
No, that's what we gave ourselves, permission if we need it.
Yeah, we put... It's like $4,000, $4,500. I remember cutting it in half last year for the budget. But still, he still has to get... I mean, we're the ones that commit that money. So, the development coordinator is the one who commits that and authorizes the additional time. If he's... If we have the budget, if it's $4,000, yes, the budget coordinator, because you approved the budget, can...
What I think this ought to say is, he can spend up to $1,500, but then he has to come back to the council and get more, ask for more, not just automatically.
I think all of his activity is directed by the development coordinator in advance, that they're talking about what they want him to do before it happens. It's just not coming to you till the claim has been presented.
You've already approved the up to $4,000. We'll never spend it, but that's not the point. I understand your point.
Yeah, but...
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item K. Possible motion discussion to extend the airport hay agreement.
I make a motion to discuss to extend the airport hay agreement from 2022 with Merrill Hay Company for the 2023 hay season.
Second. Airport Advisory Committee discussed this at their last meeting, and the committee supports Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item L. Possible motion discussion to approve Change Order Number 3.
Make a motion to approve Change Order Number 3 on the High Country Airetors Construction Contract for the Multi-Aircraft Hangar Building and Site Development. This change order is for the revised hangar foundation with no additional costs. Total contract remains $717,241 for AIP Number 346-0022-015, 2021.
Second. Discussion.
So, the money that he's gonna owe us for not doing all the work on time, does that come to the city, or does that go off of the money the state's giving us?
That money will likely, though not determined at this point, go back to the FAA. Since they're the ones paying for it. And the committee has reviewed this and also supported its approval. KLJ has reviewed and approved this. The state has reviewed and approved this. The FAA has reviewed this and given verbal approval. And once the council approves this, they will provide... The FAA will provide written approval of this change order.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item M. Possible motion discussion to approve 2022 Automatic Budget Supplements.
Make a motion to approve a 2022 Automatic Budget Supplement of $5,636.88 to the Additional Sales Tax Fund, Professional Services 212-21200-42200 for construction administration of the 10-unit tee hangar, reimbursement revenue received from AIP Grant Funding Number 3-46-0022-015-2021.
Second. Discussion.
So, there's $5,600 that came out of sales tax funds. Can we put back once we get money from the grant?
That's what you're doing right now. You already approved the payment.
We're putting it back, okay.
I have to submit the grant reimbursement. They give it to us. Once I get it back, I ask you to approve the budget supplement to the exact same place it paid out of.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item N. Possible motion discussion to approve an automatic budget supplement.
I make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of $1,798.50 to the Police Department Vehicle Repair Budget 101-42100-42510 for the repair of damage to the '22 Dodge Durango VIN number 8391 on 1823. Amount reflects a $1,000 deductible revenue received from SDPAA Claim Number GC2023113575.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item O. Possible motion discussion to acknowledge the notification of raffle.
Make a motion to acknowledge the notification of raffle from the Manusite for a raffle fundraiser to be held from 4/1/23 to 10/1/23 for general education and research funding support.
Second.
Discussion.
I talked to somebody from that today, and this sounds like a pretty good thing they're doing. It's gonna be, instead of doing their annuals thing, this is gonna be what they're gonna do. And this is not only gonna be town-wide, statewide, it's gonna be nationwide also. So, it's a pretty big thing that they're doing here.
So, your chances of winning a rifle nationwide is zero.
But you have a pretty good deal of one prize, all these things that are on here.
Somebody has to win.
Heck of a deal.
Somebody in California is gonna win it.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item P. Possible motion discussion to approve a travel training request.
I make a motion to discuss to approve a travel training request from water operators Tad Harder and Pete Miles to attend the 2023 Shooter School Fireworks hosted by Premier Pyrotechnics, Inc., at the Royal River Casino in Flandrew, South Dakota, from 4/21 to 4/23 of 2023.
Second. Discussion.
I thought it was important to add fireworks after Shooter's School.
Yeah.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item Q. Possible motion discussion to approve a travel training request.
I make a motion to approve travel training request for city administrator Temple and development coordinator Shogun.
Oh, is that the right one?
Yeah.
I thought Jason's was next.
No.
I missed one. Sorry. Go ahead.
Can I go?
My bad.
Attend flood plain management training in Rapid City on 4/17/23.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? The motion passes.
Misty, Jason's now.
I must have skipped it in my minutes when I was preparing him. I'm sorry.
Right here, Misty.
Yeah, I see it. Sorry. He's late.
New business item R. Possible motion discussion to approve a travel training request.
I'll make a motion to approve travel training request for the Southern Hills Golf Course Superintendent Jason Happy to attend the 39th Annual Turf Grass Seminar and Trade Show in Sioux Falls, South Dakota from March 5, 23 to March 8 of 23.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item S. Possible motion discussion to approve travel training request.
Make a motion to approve a travel training request from Chief, Police Chief Ross Norton to attend the South Dakota Police Chiefs Conference in Deadwood, South Dakota from April 10 through the 13th, 2023.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item T. Possible motion discussion to approve travel training request.
I make a motion to approve travel training request from PD Chief Ross Norton to attend the ICP Police Chiefs Conference in San Diego, California, 10/13 to 10/18, 2023, with the successful award of the scholarship applied for and offered through South Dakota Police Chiefs Association.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item U. Possible motion discussion to approve travel training request.
I make a motion to approve travel training request from AFO Ariel Bachman to attend the South Dakota Municipal League Human Resource and Finance Officer School in Pierce, South Dakota, 666, 1023, with possible scholarship offered through SDGFOA and SDGHRA. I don't know what the acronyms are.
Misty, is there anything you care to add?
I have a mess of my minutes right here. So I'm just, I keep up that that was Romi and Frat that seconded that. And that is our South Dakota Governmental Finance Officer Association School and the South Dakota Governmental Human Resources Association School for Ariel to attend both of those this year. And I'm not sure if anyone else will go with her. But typically, we try to send two of the four of us to those each year. They're offered by the Municipal League, and the breakout sessions that we can attend are very relevant to our job. And she's excited to go, and I'm excited to send her. And this would be a year I couldn't go because we actually have to host the election. In the off years, we get to have the county handle the majority of the election stuff. So I couldn't go this year anyway. She's excited to go. So we're happy to send her. Thank you for approving her training.
What were those again? SDG and...
South Dakota Governmental Finance Officers Association and South Dakota Governmental Human Resources Association.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Yes. I'd like to comment on the Human Resources Association. We don't have an official Personnel Department Human Resources, so we call on finance. We add that responsibility to them to try to help us out with that. So it's appreciated. It's not that finance in and of itself is big enough. We have to add human resources to that problem or to that job also. So I appreciate that you do that for us. Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Under committee reports, Administrative and Finance, JR?
Please excuse my notes if I missed something or misquoted something today. Please correct me at the end.
I know I need to.
Admin Finance met today at 1 o'clock. Present were Mayor Bob Nelson, Finance Officer, Misty Summers Walton, City Administrator Jeff Temple, Councilwoman Deb Johnson, Johnston, Councilman JR Huddleston, Chair. Guests were Chief Ross Norton and Jason Happy. Old Business Number One. Additional costs related to water, wastewater, replacement road project, ongoing review and discussions, necessary funding for water, wastewater overages, bond issue, or inter-fund loan transfer. The DOT loan agreement is not ready yet. It should be available for the next council agenda on 2/21. We will be recommending the council approve moving back monies into the 101 and 212 accounts when we get the DOT loan. Clothing Allowance Policy. PD Utilities Maintenance Policy is under review and discussions are still underway. Number Three. Discussion Selling Land. The city owns 18-plus acres adjacent to Quine, Simon Quarry near Evergreen Cemetery, General Government, 7-plus acres north of Hayden's property, and Hot Brook Canyon Water, and 100 acres near the Hot Brook Canyon Pumping Station Water. Attorney Ganji?
Yes.
Attorney Ganji provided a brief report, suggests surveys of the land to assure what land is owned by the city. Attorney would like to meet with the council at the 2/21 council meeting. Committee recommends council members visit the land mentioned to familiarize themselves with the property mentioned. Number Three. Small Claims Hold Homes Draft is ready for the city attorney to review. Number Four. Vacation Sick Leave Discussion. Southern Hills Golf Course Superintendent, Operations Manager, and Equipment Manager. Discussed and recommend moving forward at the next council meeting on 2/21. New Business Number One. PD Buyback and Purchase New Tasers From Axon Five-Year Contract Review. Chief Norton reported he needs two more tasers for new officers. PD has tasers that are not working or not working properly. Company advises current tasers are obsolete, out of warranty, and lack insurance. Company will set up an agreement to replace all tasers for $4,388.80 for five years. Current year estimate is $380 more than what is budgeted for. Committee recommends approval by council once we get the contract from the company and reviewed. Chief Norton gave an update on the new computers for the patrol vehicles. Sweet might have been one of the words he used. Number Two. Request For Support From Chautauqua Craftsman and Artisans of the Black Hills. Committee recommends not to support at this time. Purchase of city property, Arty Cold Weather Boots. Jeff will provide Misty with details and the breakdown. You approve that tonight on the council line item. Number Four. Transfer of Youth Baseball Program in Its Entirety to the Hot Springs Youth Baseball Association. Discussed. MOUs are not current. It's on tonight's agenda that we approve. Number Five. $200 bonus for Evans Blunt's Mineral Springs Life Guards, Front Desk, and Custodial Staff for the 2023 calendar year included in the approved budget. Committee recommends renewing this past agenda item for next council meeting, 2/21. Number Six. Notice to Bidders Package Liquor License Available in the City. Excuse me. City has one package liquor license available for $50,000. Recommend placing on the 2/21 council agenda.
For a minimum bid, we'll go out to bids.
I'm sorry.
We'll go out for bids, and the minimum bid acceptable is $50,000.
Okay, thank you. I won't repeat that if it's... Thanks. Number Seven. Review Monthly Finance Reports. Misty reviewed the finance reports. It is in the info side of your packet. Number Eight. Committee Member Items. Council members keep getting calls about property tax increase. That is set by the county. We also discussed cannabis. Our meeting was adjourned at 3:20 PM. Next meeting is March 6, 1 PM at the Millard Civic Center. Chair, Host, and Chair, subject to your questions.
I got a couple of questions.
I don't have any answers.
I would recommend people that want to go look at that land, set up appointment, instead of everybody just going up, because they have to take you up there. They don't want to just go up there. So, you know, to their...
That Simon's?
Yeah.
Wouldn't it probably be better if we could go as a group?
No.
No?
Not unless you want to risk a...
Quorum?
Quorum.
Oh, okay. I didn't think of that.
It's not the property at the Simon Quarry that we're looking at. It's the property out by the pump station in Hot Brook.
Oh, okay.
So to Craig's point, this Thursday, Misty, Deborah, JR, and myself, and Jeff are going out to take a look at the property. So that's one, two, three. We can have one more council member.
Which property are you looking at?
Hot Brook.
The Hayden property and the property behind the pump station.
I invited Bill if he's available.
So the other council, remaining council members, if you want to go, just get with me, and we can work out a different time to go and take a look at it. It's important for you to actually see the physical landmarks out there and where our property is at.
You have to remember, that 100 acres, most of it is to the west, up on top of the ridge, too.
So it'd be good for ziplining, or what?
Oh, boy, it would be. Oh, question number two. Oh, now you made me forget Bob Nelson. Can you reread that, Johnny?
The whole thing?
Just the highlights.
Why, sure.
Oh, shoot. Now I don't remember what I was going to ask you.
Ask me later. Ask me later.
Okay. Might it have been about the bonuses?
Or the package liquor?
Yeah. What license is available?
It is an available license that has not been used for off-sale package liquor that the city has. No one gave one up.
It's not on, it's off?
Yes. It's not on, it's off sale. Package liquor.
I never heard anything about bonuses.
Any other questions? Thank you, JR. Airport Advisory, Bill?
Airport Advisory met Thursday, February 2, 8:30 at the airport. Members present were Shane Miller, Mark Boxbaum, Gary Tellkamp, and Petra Wilson. Employees present were Rick Breitenbach, Jeff Temple, and Tracy Bastian. Elected officials present were myself and Mayor Nelson. Members of the public present were Ray Campbell of Southern Hills Aviation. We adopted the agenda as published. There were no communications from the public. Regarding the tee hangar update, we discussed change order three that was voted on tonight. January fuel sales. We sold 554 gallons of aviation fuel. Monthly flight operations. We had 21 flight operations, including one helicopter operation. We had zero balloon launches and zero balloon landings. None of them came back from past months. There was no old business items. We talked about the airport hay contract and recommended extending it. We reviewed the airport land lease agreement, and will continue our review this Thursday on a Zoom call. The airport manager had found a Jet A fuel truck opportunity. That opportunity came with a price tag of $30,000. We, with an expected revenue of about $16,000 a year, with probably some other expected fuel sales from other customers, as there are not available funds to purchase that truck, information will be shared with other parties that may be interested in dispensing and/or selling Jet A at the Hot Springs Municipal Airport. Our next meeting will be Thursday, March 2, at 8:30 AM, and our meeting adjourned at 9:50 AM.
Any questions for Bill? Thank you, Bill. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Craig?
You can have me.
When's your next one?
March 9, on my birthday. We talked about this while I gave the report.
What time and where?
Good question.
7 PM at the Mueller Center.
Any questions for Craig?
Larry might have that meeting because of my birthday.
Thank you. Historic Preservation, Deborah?
They met last Wednesday, February 1, at 5 PM here at the Mueller Center. Present were Steve Wiña, Scott Sogi, myself, Mike Summer, Cara Hagan, Joe Muller, and Pat Like. Guest present was Sarah Bechtum. Under new business, I, as the city liaison to the HPC Board and from the council, have written support letters for applications for Deadwood Grants to three building owners. I wrote a little blip of the history of the building and how the city and the historic preservation would support the grant for each of these buildings because they were very relevant to our history, and supported their grant application. Those were Castle Manor, I believe, for roof repair, the Harlow Building. There's a roof on a room off the rear of the building that needs replaced, and the Red Rock River Resort wants new windows. And then there are continued issues of the deterioration by neglect that were discussed on buildings at 243 North River Street, the Fowler-Crum Purdue Building, and the 611 North River Bodega Building. The first letter inquiring about the progress of 611 North River was sent two years ago. This laced-asical response by the owner is not sufficient. Some progress has been made by way of filling in the low spots below grade within the building footprint, but there has been no progress by way of installing a roof. There are walls on adjacent buildings that were never exposed to the elements and now are, as well as drainage issues in the Minnacotta Block Building also, known as the Red Rock River Resort. The commission has informed that Scott, our city building inspector, has spoken with the owner about fines being imposed due to the open roof. The commission chair, Steve, has penned a letter to the mayor outlining the lack of care at both properties by their owners and how the fines outlined in the city ordinances need to be implemented. The enforcement can be tied to the deterioration by neglect and the vacancy of unoccupied building sections of our ordinances. This letter received a motion by Joe and seconded by Cara and voted on and passed to be sent to the mayor and acted upon by city council. And I'm not sure if you got that yet.
I received it.
You did, okay. Under old business, historic district signage, the commission really wants to make sure that in our wayfinding signage that we get a sign that indicates that we have a historic district and which way to go to it. And they were informed that the signage is in progress, and the commission is eagerly awaiting the delivery. Under a window project, dressing project by Sarah Bechtum, she updated us at 611 North River, the Bodega Building, display cases are to be done in mid-February, and there will be displays from the Pioneer Museum filling, coming in to fill those. And at 243 North River at the Fowler-Crum Purdue, there is now a third artist who has been contacted for panel artwork to be installed in the window openings on the second floor. And on the Petty Building, the windows and part of the building space to be used to sell items from the owner's partner. Discussion Items. The Historic Preservation Commission website link in the city website. There will be communication with Zoe from the Chamber who works on the website to add links pertaining to the historical... who works on the website to add links pertaining to the historical history of the Hot Springs from the Helen McGee Historic Collection. We want to put links under the Soakin Hot Springs website that has the 39 buildings. There are links that we found to all of those buildings with more information that is available in the Helen McGee. So, we'd like Zoe to put those links under each of those buildings for that extra info to be more easily accessed. There's discussion on adding continuation of properties from the stopping point in the Helen McGee Collection, which, oh. There's discussion on adding continuation of properties, continued info, to the Helen McGee Collection, such as the demise of the West Oak. That room with the history is so phenomenal, but it seems like we should kind of be updating it. I don't know if we maybe need to talk to our librarian about certain things that are very specific to our history.
Is it still her collection then?
Well, it's just, it's the history of Hot Springs, so it should kind of be updated. It's a discussion. Because like, if you go in, I went in and I did this research to find these links, and there's three binders that are just for buildings. And the one specifically on the West Oak, I mean, there's like 10, 12, 15 pages about all of the demolitions that have proposals or attempts in the early 90s of the West Oak, that all those newspaper articles. And it just seems like we should put the rest of the story into that section, that type of a deal. And when certain things that are specific to our specific historical issues and buildings and stuff, I think we should have someone making sure all that stays up to date because today is tomorrow's history. And we want to keep that room up to date as far as I'm concerned. So, there was that discussion. We also discussed the input from the folks from the state historical department in Pier. We, as a commission, do have options for applying for and receiving grant monies for projects related to historic preservation and discuss some of the small options that could be moved forward, such as plaques for historic buildings that do not have them and window replacement on the depot, repairs and paint for the Kidney Springs gazebo. Those are just some that were brought up. The commission also needs to keep track of everyone's hours pertaining to any item related to historic preservation. As volunteers, our time can be counted towards the matching amount in a grant situation. February is the month when the commission elects officers for a two-year term. As of now, we have the position of chair and secretary. A motion was made to reelect Steve Wiña as the chair. It was seconded and the motion carried. And then a motion was made to reelect Mike Summer as the secretary and it was seconded and carried. The motion to adjourn was at 6:25 p.m. and we will meet March 1st at 5:00 p.m. here at the Mueller Center.
Any questions for Deborah?
Yeah, Deb, what were those two buildings that you were talking about?
The Fowler-Crum is the one to the right of City Hall and then the Bodega Building, which is across from the depot.
Okay, because I've noticed on the backside of the red rocks, there's a lot of chink missing also. So, have y'all addressed that issue also? Is that going to be addressed?
We need to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Did you say that display cases and stuff of museums going to be put in the bodega window?
Yeah.
With no roof or back to the building?
I guess it's going to be an enclosed case that covers the inside of the window. So, it's, and will be locked, I believe.
Yeah, but with no roof, it's still going to get wet if it snows or rains in there.
I'm not, I'm sure they're figuring out how they're going to be constructing it to keep things dry.
I just had that asked.
And hopefully, we'll be getting a roof on that building ASAP. The guy's been forewarned about our future endeavors to get that done.
Any other questions for Deborah?
Thank you, Deb.
A comment and then a question. Jeff, let's chat about the demolition by neglect and how we're going to proceed with that. Deborah, you'd mentioned something about the folks are anxious about sign delivery?
Well, they just want to make sure that in the wayfinding signage that the historic district is, has a sign designating it that it's a historic district.
But then you'd said something about...
Oh, they're anxiously awaiting that it's going to be coming.
Okay. Understanding that none of them have been ordered.
Right. I told them it's all still in progress.
Okay. Thank you. Evans Plunge Advisory, Linda?
The Evans Plunge Advisory Committee will meet this Thursday at noon at the Evans Plunge.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Larry?
Okay, best to my memory ability, I will be asking questions afterwards to fill in. Meeting started at 2:00. Present were Mayor Nelson, City Administrator Jeff Temple, Alder Man Lucans, Alderwoman Johnson, and myself. From the community were Jason Migley, Hal Glanville, Lauren Van De Stroet, Jim Brockner. No updates were given from the cemetery, parks, or Mueller Center. The new business, pickleball update. Jason Migley working on grant proposals, creating a pickleball group, also working on getting a 501(c)(3). Future plans are to create tournaments, working with activities director at school, working with Mueller Center to keep having games there. Asking for more gravel to be installed at parking lot and up to the entrance at tennis courts. Fundraising for resurfacing of tennis courts. Soccer field improvements at the Mueller Center. School will be putting irrigation, be putting in irrigation system. May not be till fall for improvements to start.
I'm sorry. Could you say that one more time, a little louder about the install?
Can you hear me now? Okay. Soccer field improvements at Mueller Center. School will be putting in irrigation system. May not be till fall for improvements to start. Will not interfere with soccer season, which starts in March and runs for seven to eight weeks. Now, that thing with the school, will we put in irrigation system? That's still kind of in the talking process right now. When we get done, Jeff, if you want to luciate on that a little bit more. Okay, needs permission to get family appropriated banners. They want to put banners up around there for their purposes of that. That's self-explanatory. A storage shed at Butler Park for soccer was okayed by the city administrator. In old business, still looking for recreation director. Reminder, position is still open. Bill came and gave a talk on alighting committee actions and comprehensive goal plans. Part of the presentation, city's part in the presentation pertaining to parks by showing support for the parks, documents, document system to align with budget, public works, and flood channel. Better informed of Title 15 land usage ordinance, more familiar with comprehensive plan. The meeting adjourned, we had no public comment. Meeting adjourned at 3:10. Next meeting will be March 1st, 2023, at the Mueller Civic Center at 2:00 p.m. Anybody would like to chime in that was at the meeting?
I would like to say something. You know, I was at one meeting when they wanted to make the tennis court only half. Not a tennis court, a basketball court. My wife and I was talking, that's the only basketball court in Hot Springs that people can go play on. And I don't think we should make it smaller.
I think that's been moved over from the basketball court now strictly going into the tennis court. Part of what they want to do is to get funding together through grants to get the money to refurbish that part of it so that it can be stay on the tennis court, have a pickleball court there. And the basketball, I believe, will be left alone completely.
Okay, cool. Any other questions for Larry? Thank you, Larry.
You're welcome.
Planning and zoning, Deborah?
Planning and zoning will be meeting Wednesday, February 15th at 6:00 p.m. at City Hall.
Thank you. Public safety, Bill, JR?
Public safety met Thursday, February 2nd at 2:00 p.m. here at the Mueller Center. Members present, Alderman Bill Lucans, Alderman JR Huddleston, Alderwoman Deborah Johnston, Mayor Bob Nelson, Chief Ross Norton, Safety Coordinator Lori Sherard, Fall River County Emergency Manager Frank Maynard. The agenda was adopted as published. Update from the Police Department, Chief Norton discussed the Fall River County Sheriff's desire to deputize city officers. Chief Norton supports the request. This action would not cause an increase in the number of calls of city officers responding outside the city. The existing out-of-city permissions practice and policy will remain in place. It's felt that deputizing the city officers will strengthen the level of cooperation that already exists. This action may eliminate some unnecessary legal challenges. The committee recommends the council approve, approves the request to deputize the city officers. Chief Norton supplied a proposal to replace all tasers this year instead of purchasing the two older models that were budgeted. Based on the economics liability insurance provided, warranties, and technical abilities, the committee supports a proposal. Due to our staffing successes, officer-initiated contacts have been improving and increasing. Old business. 21-15, old house number project update. Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts are both working to gather data. 23-01, Colebrook Street name issue. Signs have been ordered, county has been notified. Letters have been drafted to be sent to Colebrook Street residents. Item closed. 23-02, no parking zone across from 2516 and 2518 Washington. Signs have been ordered, item closed. New business, yield sign on Canyon View Circle. The sign does not control an intersection and should be removed. General discretion was held by the members regarding the clothing policy that is currently being revised. Next meeting will be Thursday, March 2nd, 2:00 p.m. Mueller Civic Center Conference Room. We adjourned at 3:35 p.m.
Bill, care to add anything?
That's it.
Any questions for Bill or JR?
So, when does the county want to do this with the police department?
I don't think we've heard any data. It's just, most of us found out when we read the information in the paper that Sheriff Norton had made the proposal to the county commissioners.
Well, I talked to the mayor about this and I had a citizen that read the paper too. And he says, "Well, if we're going to do that, why don't we just go countywide law?" What they said. That's why he asked me. I said, "I didn't even know anything about it because I hadn't read the paper at the time."
It's not what it's working for or working towards. We're not doing that.
It actually goes in the opposite direction of countywide law if we did something like that and...
See, and I, like I told Baron, I'm against it. But he thinks it's a safety thing. But I got to talking to quite a few law enforcement people and they said once they take that state certification, they can arrest anybody in the state of South Dakota. They don't have to be county deputized to arrest somebody out of the county. No, it ain't a safety thing. That's just my opinion. That's all I got to say.
You said somebody made the statement it was a safety issue?
No, you did. You said it's for them to be deputized kind of the safety thing for not getting thrown out of court. I guess not safety, but not to get thrown out of court because if they arrest somebody out of this county or something, then it's a good...
You mean like jurisdictional?
Yes, that's, that's what I recall sharing is that both the sheriff and the police chief have said that currently because our officers don't have the same level of authority that the deputies do outside of the city limits to arrest somebody, that if we did, then the possibility exists that a sharp defense attorney could contest and say, "Well, they didn't have the authority to make that arrest anyway."
But they do once they took that state certification.
Right, and that's why the statement here is the action may eliminate some unnecessary legal challenges. Challenge probably wouldn't be valid, but it, it would just, it would get rid of the challenge.
Like I said, I'm against it because I don't think the city police officers ought to be out of town anyway.
And I...
Well, I didn't think it was going to be a daily routine thing, just has emergency backup.
Uh-huh, we'll see.
Is the way I took it.
I acknowledge that for a long time, there are people in the camp that we should be painting a yellow, a yellow line on city limits and the police should never cross that yellow line to leave the city limits to help other law enforcement. I think that's very narrow-minded. This is a community and a county that has limited law enforcement. And to ask a police officer to put a fellow law enforcement officer at risk of a life and limb because we can't leave city limits, I think is very narrow-minded and I would hope that this council would not choose to go down that route.
Well, I don't think that's a rule. Is that, I thought they'd go a mile out of town?
They, to enforce ordinances and, yes, they have jurisdictional authority a mile out of town. Everyone knows there has been those situations where they have been outside that mile. And I stand behind the fact that if, if a council wants to tell the law enforcement officers, "You can't go help a fellow law enforcement officer that's outside that one mile jurisdiction, who's at the risk of life and limb," shame on them. So, we'll just leave it at that.
I don't think there'll be a councilman that says if there's an emergency and they need him outside town, they're going to...
And it always comes down to what is the emergency based on the individual council member and we know how some of them feel about that. So, any other questions? All right, thank you. Public Works, Craig?
Well, I didn't take notes. I didn't, I only did the last of it, so you're only getting a couple of things from me. Hail damage on roofs. We're going to look at the other roofs that was not put on the list to fix to see what we think. Larry, Jeff, Dave and I. The wayfinding signs is going forth with more meetings, which will be at Public Works and then we can come sit in and give their advice, what they think. Annual brush pile, we're going to try to do it within the next 30 days. That's only notes I took. Dave took all the rest.
Any questions for Craig?
Next meeting?
Oh, yeah, I got that. It would be on February 14th, Valentine's Day. So, y'all can bring Valentine's to Dave and I.
All right, thank you, Craig.
No problem.
Golf Course Advisory and City Administrator, Jeff?
Well, our first golf advisory for '23 is tentatively scheduled for Tuesday, 14 March, 6:00 p.m. at the golf course. They tend to be liberal with that schedule, so that's where it's at right now. On the city administrator side, things that weren't covered already. A very large thank you to council for supporting the MCC in hosting the Missoula Children's Theater. It was really a successful event. We had 42, a little over 40, somewhere over 40 participants and over 400 spectators or guests for the two shows. Well, 200 each. Financially, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but the event was just about break even.
A little over, I think our revenue a little bit exceeded.
Okay, so that's good news. So, I have already taken the liberty of scheduling our time for next year. I got a lot of good feedback from it, so people, I think, really enjoyed it. And the irony of that is we had grandparents bringing their kids and the grandparents had been here back in 90 or whenever it was last time, 30, 40 years, 30 years ago or so. So... So that was kind of a fun thing. The AmeriCorps request has been submitted, and we will have the decision by 15 March. That's the request for the team on the river restoration. The irony is, you'll have a decision by 15 March, the deadline for the second round, which is in summer, is the 2nd of March, so I'll go ahead and resubmit for the second, second round as well. I don't expect to get both of them, but in case we don't get the first one, we'll be there for the second one. And the River Restoration Volunteer Team is assisting on coordinating housing for the team. We've had some council members step forward, and they're trying to coordinate that for seven or eight kids for that period, so. And that's all I've got, subject to your questions.
Any questions for Jeff?
I came up here one of those times and watching the young man and a young woman, and I was thoroughly impressed by not only what they did, but their technique to keep the attention of all 42 of those kids. And, yeah, I think it's a good thing.
Pretty amazing.
They were very good at what they did.
Yeah, no, it's a good, it's a good program. I drafted a letter back to the, to the company for those two kids that were here, kids.
I also told them while I was driving my bus, I had kids on my bus that were reciting their lines.
That's funny.
So I thought that was pretty cool, too.
That's great. Now, I will tell you, an anecdotal story is the fun part to watch, and Bob, I think, Bob mentioned this before, is to watch the kids support each other in the event, remind them of their lines and, you know, and tell them they got to go over there. And they only had really three days of rehearsals. The first, the first night was, was, what's the word looking for?
Auditions?
Auditions, thank you. And, and pretty much figuring out who was tall enough for what role and who would fit in the costumes and all that. So they really only had three, three after-school periods of rehearsals, so I'm always impressed by them, but it never ceases to impress me.
Any other questions for Jeff? Thank you. Misty, Finance Officer Report?
I'm going to make it quick because you all have it. It's all written in your packets. I did get financial reports through the end of January. Reminder, slow in revenue, heavy on expenses. We developed a good plan, which was our budget for 2023, and if we commit to sticking to it, I expect this condition to improve as the year progresses. Prepared and distributed 163 W2s and 201099s for the 2022 year-end reporting. They've been submitted and accepted electronically through the IRS Fire System and Social Security Wage Reporting Systems. Between February 15th and March 1st, we will publish the required notice of vacancies for our upcoming municipal election. We have four two-year council seats, one in each ward. The members with terms expiring, Ward 1 Craig, Ward 2 Dave, Ward 3 Linda, Ward 4 Deborah. The earliest date to begin circulating your petitions is March 1st. The deadline's March 28th, and the number of voters required on each petition by ward is also listed in my memo.
You know, word says on our website that I'm not up this year, the other councilman.
Oh, is it wrong?
There's a whole bunch of them, yeah.
Oh, thank you for pointing that out.
My wife pointed it out to me.
Okay, I'll make note of that and I'll get it updated.
You gotta run and get it.
Yes, sorry. It's hard to remember all the places. You have to update that, so thank you for mentioning it to me, Craig. I'll make sure it gets updated. Tuesday, January 10th, was the first day of the '98 session of the South Dakota Legislature, and as of February 1st, it was the last day for new bills, and 449 bills have been presented. As of my update, it was 346, but 449 as of the last day. Some updates on that. Hopefully you are getting the updates by email. They're helpful. It's not everything, but they're helpful, and it's interesting to see the process and watch it work through the system. Talk a little bit about the ways we are considering to pay for the added costs associated with water and wastewater infrastructure project. JR gave a little update, going to be recommending we transfer some money back at the next meeting. I explained the details for that. If you have any thoughts or concerns about the option, please let me know. Gave a little update on the housing study. I did read it, I heard someone else say I did, I'm glad to hear it. 108-page documents, an update to the previous study we had, and Craig did mention, there's a few things I noted that I found interesting, and one of them was the findings on unit demand by type of housing and the age-appropriate units for the demographic of 65 to 75 and older was the largest projected gain of 96 households needed in the next five years. I thought that was interesting. Couple of recommendations I found interesting, I summarize in there for you and even tell you what page you can find that stuff on if you don't thoroughly read through the update. Still looking for volunteers to help obtain door prizes. Craig, you said you'd help. Our event's March 29th. Be nice to get some of them. What's that?
I got this nice pin right here.
Yes, something nice that you'd like to win. And reminder, our next meeting will be on Tuesday, the 21st, due to the President's Day Holiday. Subject to your questions on any of the financial reports, that's all I have.
Misty, can the housing study be shared with...
It is on our website.
Okay, so it is shareable.
We did get it on the city website. And we left the old one, since this is an update to it, we just called it the 2016 Housing Study and then the 2022 Housing Study Update.
Thank you. I don't have anything for you tonight, so the next one is a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn, second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Have a good evening.